In the pledge of...
.................................................................. Next up, we have comments from the audience regarding items for future consideration. This is the only time the audience members can speak, as this is a business meeting. Persons addressing the board are asked to state their name and address for the record, and limit their comments to five minutes. Would anyone like to address the board this evening? Anyone care to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we will move to our item number four, our consent agenda. Our consent agenda consists of: A) Approval of Policy 347 Student Records; B) Approval of Youth Option Requests; C) Approval of September 22nd, October 13th, and October 20th, 2014 School Board Meeting Minutes; D) Approval of Line of Credit; and E) Approval of Teacher Early Retirement Incentive Proposal. These will be voted on with one vote, but would anyone care to, and no discussion, would anyone care to pull any of the items out?
I would like to pull E.
Okay.
Indeed.
Indeed. All right. Any others? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through C. So moved?
Been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Seeing none, motion carries. Next up, we will take item D, Approval of Line of Credit. That would be Quinn.
Doug, can you enlighten us as to why we need this?
The last couple of years, we've had a time in January, just before we got the tax money, where we had a cash flow problem. As you may recall, we're self-funded for our health insurance, and we have no control over when the claims come in. We had some, a couple of big months. If we don't need the money, we don't borrow anything, and there's no cost to us, but it's just a precautionary measure in the event that we should have a cash flow problem right before tax time again.
Why wouldn't we use our fund balance?
That's already in the works.
It is?
Yes, it is.
So there's maybe above that that we may need?
Yes. Prior to, when we did the debt defeesence, and we had the very large fund balance, there wasn't any need for this, but now we're to the point where we may or may not need it. As I think I indicated to the board last year, we had some money for like 10 or 11 days, cost us just a couple hundred dollars to have that security.
Thank you.
So, the, you said prior to the debt defeesence, are you talking about prior to us paying off the sports field, is that?
Correct.
Okay. So, prior to that, do you recall roughly what we had in the, and this is Fund 10, isn't it? Is that what?
This is Fund 10.
Okay. So, do you remember what we had in that, and then what we kind of run with now?
Um, let's see. We used seven million, we were at about a $12 million fund balance at that time. That's why we were able to pay off the debt.
And now, we paid that off, and now we kind of have to precautionary do a line of credit in case we deplete it?
Right, just in case.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the line of credit. So moved?
It's been moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Seeing none, motion carries. Next up, consent agenda item E, Approval of Teacher Early Retirement Incentive Proposal. Nancy?
Okay. A couple of, just clarification items here. Okay, so now, it sounds, it looked like the wording changed so that it now allows for this to continue past the 2014-15 school year, unless we change, you know, unless we change it. Okay? I mean, that, because that wording did change from the document we had received, that's the, that's the last one, which I'm glad, because I feel like when we do this, we kind of want something that we can hopefully carry forward more than one year. Okay? So then, the second item that I wanted clarification on was in regards to paying out for unused sick days. I think it's, you know, we changed the way we're doing, you know, doing that in the handbook. So now, it's unused sick days not to exceed 45 days unless teachers had banked additional days under previous contracts.
Right.
So, while it says not to exceed 80 days, I just wanted to kind of clarify that we're not changing what's in the handbook going forward. I just want to make sure that, that, you know...
That's a good, a very good catch, good point. When, in the handbook, and I'll double-check, because this third draft is from the attorney, where we cap it for new employees at 45 days, and then experienced employees that have been here for a while, we grandfathered them in where they were. And I think the, what you're capped at trumps this, but I will verify that, and if we need to tweak something there, I'll do that.
You know, because I like the way we set that up, so that we're not accumulating it all to pay an lump sum, that we're paying as we're, as we go. So, I just wanted, wanted to, to mention that. And then, I don't know if anybody wanted, can we have discussion, or no?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We are having...
Yeah, we are having discussion. I was saying, am I, I'm the only one talking, so...
You're dominating the conversation, but yeah.
You have the floor.
So, okay, and then, I don't know if anyone felt like they wanted to discuss the C-point at this point in time or not, or if everybody was still okay with the, with that point as well.
I would.
Quinn?
You know, and we all, we see a letter from Ms. Dartsch, and she's a valued employee that's been with us for a long time, and it's incentive both for the employee and for the district. And when, when I voted for this in the finance committee, or not voted for it, but gave my approval to move it forward, it makes sense that if you are receiving insurance through the district, that we offer this as an incentive. But what it said in email is, she's already saving us money by not using our insurance. It is supposed to be incentive for both of us. Now, in order for her to receive this, she would go back on our insurance rolls and then collect the money. Well, I don't think, well, I still believe that we should pass it as it is. One of the good things is that next year, it may get turned around differently, but I think it's something that we have to look at, because we are giving $35,000 to just people that take the insurance. And while the teachers and the district both negotiate this, this could be considered a flaw or a loophole for, for some people. But ultimately, I think if there's a better resolution, bring it, bring it forward, and let's hear it.
Other comments?
I just want to clarify something that Quinn said, because we don't negotiate this. This isn't a negotiated item, just to, just so everybody's clear on that.
We discussed.
And then, my only other comment with this is, you know, I'm really, I'm really in favor of making things simple, and I'm not sure that having it paid out over a three-year period is good for our district office employees. I don't know how we could change it, because they're going to have to remember then, now, for the next three years to make a payment, and, you know, kind of keep track of that. So, I don't know how we could change it to make it easier, but I, I think that we do a lot of things that require our business office employees to keep track of things year after year after year, and I think that's a lot of manual things, and I think there should be probably a better way. I don't know what that better way is, but...
Are you suggesting a one-time payout, then?
Yep. Possibly.
And we can maybe have Doug respond to that, and then Stephanie. Doug, what are your thoughts?
Well, the, with a one-time payment, of course, the issue is how many people are going to take it, since we were talking about cash flow issues here before. If there were a significant number of people, that could be pretty expensive. The fact that it's limited, well, the $35,000 at least would be limited to the three years. That would lessen the burden on the office, district office. We've had, you know, the old plan, quote-unquote, people have been on for years, and some people will continue to be on for many more years, and so we have to keep track of who's got how much left in their account, and notify them when they're getting near the end, and so on and so forth. So, being able to hand somebody a check and say, you know, here's, here's what you're getting by virtue of this plan, certainly would take a big burden off of the staff in the district office. So it's, I'm not sure which is, we've kicked that around Lowell and I, and Joel Green and I, and really, you know, I, my big concern is always thinking about the cash flow problem, not to minimize the burden on the ladies who are doing the record-keeping, but I guess I, I'm wishy-washy on the whole thing right now, because I, I'm not sure which is a better way for us to go.
Stephanie?
Well, I'm curious, because of this list of 22 we have in front of us, do we know how many of these potential candidates are currently on our insurance plan, that they'd be eligible for that $35,000 payout? Do we have a number?
I assume they all were. The worst-case scenario, because if this is, we're not just identifying, these happen to be the 22 that are eligible this year, okay? But we, we tried to be conservative by raising this, you know, not saying we're going to use $38,000 as the starting salary, but rather the 42.5. So we pretended that all of them took it, so you could see the worst-case scenario. When it, great comments, by the way, from the entire board, and it's nice that you're recognizing that for the central office staff, this is a lot more simplistic than what we've had in the past. I mean, it's a huge, not a baby step, it's a huge step forward, because it's divided over those, that three-year period rather than forever, and it's a set amount, so they don't have to figure that out. And then, you can't, once you're out of somebody's insurance, you can't automatically get back in unless there's a, what do they call that, a life?
Qualifying event.
Qualifying event. But that's not to say that we, the board still gives us the opportunity to talk with individuals, and talk with the board, and set reasonable, I mean, this is, these are the guidelines for moving forward. But there are going to be other things that come forward to the board, and we're going to be working on, hopefully now, the non-certified staff stuff as well.
Because the concern is, is well-understood, that if someone, for no fault here at all, but if, if they made a choice, that at the time was, what was given what they had, and now we're changing things, that in retrospect, that may not have been the best choice. I think our intent is clear, that we're trying to help our employees as much as possible, and we've come across a situation that isn't necessarily helpful, but in fact, may have made a situation worse. I am still going to vote for this as it stands, simply because I would much rather have something in the books than have us do this plan as it is, rather than not do anything at all. But I think with the whole point of helping and rewarding long-term employees for their service, that, that may need future discussion.
You know, you can modify it at this point in time. You can say whether, you know, everybody gets the three, it's totally the board's decision. We'll carry out what the decision is.
But we don't necessarily have numbers in place for that, and that wouldn't be responsible for us to do that tonight.
Yeah, I just wanted, I didn't want you to think that it's, you're stuck with what the administration brings, you're not.
But it's the process. We've already vetted this, we thought about it, there's a flaw. John, I'm sorry, will you finish?
Well, I guess that's just my concern for the board, is that I don't necessarily want to see this delayed any further either, because we have, we have people that are trying to make choices about their retirement in their next 20 or 30 years, and what they're going to do. I don't want to keep them hanging by delaying the vote either, until we can get numbers.
So we could approve this, and you could bring something up in the future?
Mm-hmm.
To take care of this particular person, it just came out so quick. Okay.
Is it that much of a delay to get a better solution by the next meeting? Or the same solution, but know that it's better than we thought it was, or something like that? Is it, is it that much of a problem to, to rework the numbers the other way, take a look at it, and, and readdress it at the, at the next meeting with, with, you know, the additional knowledge? So, rather than just, well, it's the best we have right now, let's, let's vote on it. Now that a new concept has come up, maybe we do just need to delay it one more meeting to take a look at the numbers.
Anyone else, wait a second?
No, I kind of agree with John, and we are actually having a personnel committee meeting next Monday, we could run through it one more time there, and then bring it back to the board, first meeting in November.
Well, then, finance doesn't look at it, though.
That'd be a good idea.
What?
Well, then, finance doesn't see it first, because that affects all the numbers on this one, if we start calculating for health insurance on a case-by-case basis.
Would you be willing to forego that process this time and let it come?
Well, I think we have...
I mean, you have, I'm sorry.
An option, right? If we, because the wording on here is, is the board reserves the right to terminate or modify this benefit at any time. So, we could approve this tonight, knowing that we do have a particular situation that we may want to look at, you know?
And that would give us the time for both committees to look at it and bring it back? Yeah. Or Quinn?
And we have, as, as long as I've been on this board, two, three years, we have taken on different issues that were outside the realm, and not all were favorable, but we did listen, and we acted one way or the other. So, I think the board is open to listening. So, I agree that pass it as is, the wording is in there for us to just make, change course if we want, and move forward.
Because I do think it's going to require a little bit of thought process, you know, so that going forward, it can be some, you know, it might be something as far as had coverage for, if, you know, 20 years, you know, for the last 15 years, or, you know, something like that. So it's not like somebody would choose one way, and then, you know, for the last five years before they retire, and then switch back, yes, to switch on the plan or something, right? So I think it's something we do need to talk through more than just tonight, quickly.
Nancy?
I think if you're looking at fairness that way, then we really need to look at who's got single coverage and who's got family coverage, because, you know, if everybody's getting $35,000, it's not going to be fair that way either. So, I mean, I think, I just think that that, just that little area needs to have a little more discussion and a little more information on it.
Dr. Wilson, and Stephanie, and John, where are you?
The, the 35 was based on single coverage, rather than family coverage.
But single coverage for three years is not, not $35,000.
No, it's a little bit...
More or less.
It's a lot more.
Tons more.
Single coverage, Doug, eight?
Yeah, single, $35,000 would cover three years of single, not family, though. So, I didn't, you know, the individual communication you guys are discussing, that didn't get sent to me till Saturday, and I haven't had time to talk with that individual yet. But what typically happens is then that person and I would sit down, and we'd go through what's the, what are the issues and what are the problems? And then, I either try to get them into the finance or the personnel committee, make sure that I'm going down the right path at the board, at least a three board member's support, and then we take it to the board for approval, and then we close that session. But that's if, there's not a single plan you're going to put out that's going to please everybody. I was amazed that this went through personnel and finance, and was vetted in front of the board, and our attorney even liked it. So, but it's, it's like, like we said before, it's totally the board's call.
So, I am completely comfortable voting for it as it stands, but putting it on my agenda for finance and facilities in November, with revised figures, to find out how much it would cost, where people are actually at, if they've only been off the insurance for a year, you know, how that's going to work, so that at least there's something. But then I also take Nancy's suggestion, too, that we need to look at that 35. If that's single and not family, then we need to, we need to develop that a little bit further, so.
Okay. Do I here? Doug?
So if we pass this tonight, can they take advantage of it right away, when we maybe need to rework it?
Doug, how would it affect, how would it affect people if we delay this? Is it timely, timely that we need to get this done?
Well, I think so, yes. That's why, why Lowell had, was it December 1st? Or date, so, yeah, the sooner the better.
So that gets time to communicate with the staff and everything?
We've had a, a history in the last few years of some of these decisions waiting till the last minute.
Okay.
And we've got, got, you know, we do put this in place now, I think that's fair to the employees, that they've got half a year's notice to do some of their planning, rather than if we wait and do it in May or June.
But then, how quick do we get the amendment passed? Because if someone wants to declare that they want to retire in 1615, did I have that right? No, 15, 16, thank you. So if they want to retire in 1516, if we pass this tonight, they at least have some comfort knowing that this would be their plan, but they may get additional. But if they wait until we decide how the healthcare may change, and that takes, if we run it through Personnel and Finance in November, it would hit the first, or the second, it is the second board meeting in November, or the first board meeting, only board meeting in December. Is that giving the employees enough time to declare until we get the health insurance?
Can I clarify something here?
So I'm still waiting for my...
Want to address that?
Because you went from my question slash statement immediately to asking Doug, and I still had something.
That's right.
Yeah.
We skipped, Doug said that it was timely, they needed to get...
Yes, but that wasn't my question.
What was your question?
My question was about, and Stephanie nodded, you understood, it was about, is there, are we generating a problem? Try to paraphrase it. We generate a problem if we, if we approve this now, and then...
And then go back and change it?
And go back and change it. Are we generating a problem either for the employees, or for the, the business of the district, you know, the, the finances of the district, one way or the other? Are we, are we creating a problem by putting something in place and then right away changing it, and if people take advantage of it between now and when we, when we change it, could that be a disadvantage to them when they...
Well, let me throw this out there, because there's a lot of discussion...
Hang on, now, once again, I'd like that addressed before you redirect it to another thought to Doug.
The, the first payment that we would make under this plan would be in the 1516 budget year anyway, so we'd build that into our budget plan.
Or next year.
Yeah.
But that doesn't really address...
What's your question? Ask it again.
If people are going to decide now?
Now.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
If we give, so we just said that they can't submit it until after it's done? Is that something that we...
So if we decide now, and then we immediately start reworking the package, or reassess, reevaluating the package, if they, if they decide, are they going to be allowed to decide and sign some sort of paper now that either locks them out of what might end up being a better deal for them, or what, what might avoid, well, might either avoid an overpayment by the district, or, do you understand what I'm saying? Is it, if it, we're worried about the numbers, is it going to change the numbers either in their favor, or in the district's budget favor, or something either way, but it's too late to, because they already signed the papers between now and when we did it? If, if that's the case, and if we end up saying, well, that could be the case, so we need to lock out the option for them to, to sign the papers on it now, even though it'd be 1516 year, well, then what's the difference whether we lock the option out now, or wait till, wait till November, when we can readdress with a more complete thought?
John, you can talk, and then we'll come back.
I think, I think the, the big thing is giving them the peace of mind to know there's going to be something, so they can start researching, if it'll make sense for them. If they have the confidence that something's going to be in place, that the figures here there may change, they have the time to start researching it now, instead of waiting three weeks, and then putting a time card show against the holiday.
And then they got to figure it out in a week.
Exactly. So I think if we at least put something in place, so that they know that they can start researching, with the caveat that this, you know, a number here or two may be tweaked, they can at least start having those discussions if they want to, and get to a place where they're comfortable, and then add that tweak in if it changes.
Well, I know on this document that, that's in front of us, it says to notify by December 22nd, and I remember being at Personnel, and they, and it was, used to be, you had to February 1st. So, we could extend it to notify the superintendent to February 1st, to give us more time to go back and vet it one more time. I'd like to see us put out something that is accurate, and that we feel we can live with, you know, live with for a while, and not, I have problems approving something that I think we still need to discuss, and I don't want...
Nancy?
Okay. My point exactly, why would we approve something, knowing that we have to change, or potential change of a paragraph? The teachers have this document, they can already be looking at to see if, if it's something that is going to work for them, for at least two of the paragraphs, and the third one may change a little bit. So, it's not like they're, it's going to be a completely different document, and they have to start all over from square one. They can be looking at this now, and seeing if this is going to be a workable option for them.
Would it be possible to have this come back as a committee of the whole, instead of having to go through each committee? Then if we were to wait, that would expedite the process, we could put it on at the next board meeting as a committee of the whole agenda item. Or do you think it's worth two separate nights, two separate discussions? I personally did not realize there would be that many changes to this at all. I didn't think we'd start tweaking the number at all, I was comfortable with what we've talked about. So I don't personally think there should be any major changes. We've made a lot, had been, having lots of conversations and lots of input from our teachers on this, and I think it's pretty solid. We ran into one glitch, and that is an unfortunate situation, so, but it's enough, I agree, we want to make sure we're all comfortable. So if we want to wait, maybe we could just do a committee of the whole, give our administration time to research that, come back and tell us how this changes things. What would they recommend, and then how would it change all of the number, and the whole plan?
How, what would change things? How, what they would come back and recommend?
Right, based on the one complaint we got.
So that would generate a whole lot of questions and discussion, and that kind of stuff that could be, could be cleaned up a little bit, and committee the questions...
Well, if we did a committee of the whole, that's still committee work, and then we would still have to bring it back to a full board for a vote. But at least it doesn't have to go through two committees, but I'm fine if you want to take your time.
I mean, I'm not just looking at the one complaint from the person, I mean, I was kind of looking at a couple of different things, as I thought about it, about the fairness of the single family, about the three-year payout, and things like that. So mine was not about the one complaint.
Okay. So do we want to move to lay it over, or do we want to...
I was just going to say, should we make a motion to table it, then, until the first school board meeting in November?
Someone could do that.
Would that be a correct way to phrase it?
I'd like to see, well, yeah, we can, we can, some I can make that motion, but I'm thinking I'd prefer to stay go-to committees.
I'm sorry.
We're not talking about dragging it out to December, we're talking about committees...
In November?
Right.
You know, committees...
Well, it would still take one, two, and then it's two steps at the board meeting. It's going to be delayed by four meetings.
When does finance meet?
I'm sorry?
When does finance committee meet?
November 17.
Right.
So then, we could approve it the last board meeting in November.
Usually, you, two steps.
We've reviewed it and reviewed it, I think we only need to vote.
Bring it back in one step, you're comfortable with that?
I am.
Gentlemen?
The qualifying language on the $35,000 was added, it wasn't part of the original proposal. Originally, everybody was going to get, basically it was seven times five is 35, so five years of single coverage, and originally, it wasn't, it wasn't in there. I'm just, I want...
I want, I mean, this is the one that came in front of the board. So you could just take that language back out if you wanted to. And then you're done.
Vote on it tonight, you mean?
Yeah.
I don't remember hearing that five-year number at Personnel.
Part of it. No, but you can, I can show you the ones we all sent to you that said, we added the, if they're already taking. That was here, I believe.
That was the Personnel committee.
The Personnel, we added, okay. So you got, this is the one that went to Personnel Committee. It's not there. It just was the 35 over two years at that time. So.
So what are you suggesting?
If the, if it's, if the hangup is, why should some get 35 and others not? Because the districts benefited by them not having our insurance in the first place? Then just take out the part that says they've had to.
Add it to insurance.
Yeah.
Just a $35,000 payout.
Oh.
And we could do that, but that doesn't address the point about a family versus single.
And it doesn't address, although you did calculate based on everybody taking it, didn't you?
Yes.
Yeah. Worst case.
Right, that, if everybody, that is in the numbers. That is if everybody takes the 35,000, everybody's eligible.
So back to the family issue, we only pay the single. People can opt to take family.
Well, see, I didn't know where the 35,000 came from. I didn't know where that number came from. And it does say in here, I mean, it references single or family coverage. So I didn't know, I don't know how much our single family is, I mean, our single family, our single insurance premium is. I didn't realize that it was to be over a five-year period when we're all, we're paying it over a three-year period. So I, I just don't understand where that number came from.
Okay, Sean. If I'm understanding this correctly, we could modify item C and just make it a contribution of 35,000 spread over three years, period. And take all the rest of that language out. And would that? And then everyone gets it regardless of whether you were single or family coverage or no coverage.
They have to fail us.
No. What we don't know are the impacts on the budget if we do that.
Well, didn't he already, they already told us.
You do know it?
Yeah, because that's, I was figured with everybody getting the 35.
Okay, so how does the board feel about doing that?
So it would read a contribution of 35,000 spread over three years to assist with the cost of insurance.
No, all of that's out. It would just say 30, contribution of 35,000 spread out over three years, period.
To assist with the cost of insurance, you can leave in, but you can legally strike if the employee is currently receiving health insurance coverage to the district and if the employee did not.
And we still want the last part in there about if an employee becomes eligible within this three-year timeframe, the contribution would be prorated accordingly. And we still need the verbiage in there about Medicare eligible. So it just, if we're going to put a motion through on this one, I just want to be very clear on the language for part C then. So we would read a contribution of 35,000 spread out over three years to assist with the cost of insurance.
Then a new sentence.
And if the employee would not be Medicare eligible during the course of those three years, and if an employee becomes eligible within this three-year timeframe, the contribution would be prorated accordingly. I got that right?
Yes.
So we would make a motion to accept it as presented with the following amendment.
Right? Let me get that read there. If, I mean, if it becomes a motion, I got to hear it.
Can you read it one more time?
Okay, so we would.
It's entirety.
We would put a motion forth that says we would accept the teacher early retirement incentive proposal for the 2015-16 school year as presented with the following amendment, part C, under early retirement incentive. It would read, a contribution of 35,000 spread out over three years to assist with the cost of insurance.
Keep going, if.
However, if an employee would not be Medicare eligible during the course of those three years. No, that's not, Kathy, help me out.
Can I take a stab at that?
A contribution of 35,000 spread out over three years to assist with the cost of insurance. If employee would not be Medicare eligible during the course of those three years.
And if.
No, if.
Just if.
Just if.
Oh, yeah.
And then the last.
And then if an employee becomes eligible within this three-year timeframe, the contribution would be prorated.
That's right.
Right, and that's, so everyone understand the language change? Now, can we ask their input?
Why not?
Because it worked with us.
Exactly, why not? But you're the boss.
Yes.
Or can I?
I'm going to allow.
And you are.
And maybe you guys can't even ask, answer this question because I don't know. From the list, because I've, and everyone on there taken insurance, had taken our insurance at some point? Do we know that?
I didn't look at it.
Okay. I was just curious if at some point they took our insurance.
Well, we're not, we're not, the only change we're making is possibly to add people to this.
Right, but you know, I mean, I understand your point of not paying them if they never took our insurance.
No, we, see, that's why we're taking that language out.
I understand how Pam took it for 29 years and then, you know, she paid for 29 years. There were, because there could be people that never took it. And that's what, I was just curious.
But they would get a payout. The way we're changing this, someone like that would get a payout. Is everyone comfortable with that?
So I think the concern is just trying to contribute towards their continuing healthcare after they're.
Right.
Going to the district.
Right, because of early retirement.
Just taking care of people.
Okay, so someone like to make a motion to that effect?
No, I still want to talk about this. Okay, so if someone never had.
Yeah, I was saying, so if someone never had the ins, I mean, for me,
that clause is kind of the taking care of the people, you know, clause.
Right.
You know, like, you know, just like if someone had some kind of severance package for, in the public sector, you would, you know, try to help them out if they had their insurance through you and the family that you're not just, they're not going on the street with, with nothing. But if they never had the insurance and they had it from somebody else, I don't feel like we have to spend money, you know, spend the money. I mean, because I'm looking at that dollar about as, you know, like keeping the best interest of the employee going forward, but not something we always have to pay out when, you know, when it wasn't somewhat, something that we never had to pay out or.
So put a year on it then.
But you used to, and.
Well, we, I'm talking about in that case. I get that, I understand, current case, I don't understand going forward.
Yeah, we're not going to have the audience interject at this point. We're just going to debate up here at this point, thanks.
And I would never debate, however.
Discuss.
I think Quinn's point was a good one before where he said, the district has been saving the cost of that insurance over all those years on an individual. Why shouldn't they get the same benefit that everybody else is? Just because, I mean, they actually, it was beneficial for them not to take our health insurance over all those years.
Because if it was a family, you're right, over two years, it would have cost us 17,000 something on average, right? So.
So you have to think about that, but that, Scotty, did you have something?
Well, I'm just mulling this over. And part of me says we could put a year on it. So anyone who hadn't been part of the health insurance prior to, I don't know, we'd have to firm up the date, but 2010, 2011.
Would you have to firm up the date?
So if you, you know, if you haven't had insurance up in, you know, up until that point, then you're only eligible if you've been on our, you know, if you've been on our insurance plan all along. And if you dropped it in 2010, then you can't pick it up again. I mean, that's one way to frame it. The other, the other thought is, is that it's also possible that with one or two exceptions, the reason that they're not on, haven't been on our insurance plan historically is because there was something better. And just because they retire from us doesn't necessarily mean that they're not going to be covered by the insurance that's better because they haven't been taking it all along. And they might, and I'm guessing, because I don't know the particulars, they might be okay. They may not all of a sudden want to take this then. I don't, I don't know. I can't speak for every person who didn't take our plan to begin with. So we, you know.
Okay, other comments?
Well, I have another question. We have a draft three, and then we have this teacher early retirement incentive proposal. Which are we voting on? Because C is not the same in both documents.
The draft three is the attorney taking what you, what was proposed originally and putting it in language that would go into the handbook. So now if this is, there would be a draft four from the attorney that would reflect what the board passed this evening.
Okay, because the draft three has a, has the contribution going into the 403B and the other, the incentive proposal does not have it going into the 403B.
No, it's separate from that. That's a different column. We have both.
In the event, the employee is receiving single or family coverage under the district's health plan as of the date of retirement, a 403B contribution of $35,000 and such contribution will be prorated over a period of three years immediately following the employee's retirement.
That was the new attorney's recommendation rather than just doing a cash payout, putting it into a 403B with the paragraph below that says, any contributions made by the districts in accordance with the provisions above will not exceed the applicable legal limits and any excess will be paid as a cash payment. He said it costs the district the same or less and it gives them more flexibility.
Can we put money into a 403B when the person isn't an employee? And again, my question of which document are we voting on? Because they're two different documents.
Yeah, because you can't do it into an HSA, that's for sure. And I don't, this was an attorney, I didn't even recognize his name, Brandon, that's something or another, from that, from our, one of Gary's associates. So they would, what they would do is take this and adapt it to what you pass. And if you can't, that's why they would say, why it says here, if it's, if you can't do it past the first year, then it's going to be paid as a cash payment. So I mean, it covers it in that language there.
But the question is, we're voting on this one here. I just want to answer that.
You're voting on, yeah, exactly.
What you got here? I don't know where that.
Which one?
Which one?
We have two documents.
Draft three or the proposal that's dated October 13?
Because you see Stephanie, what Stephanie put together and kind of deleted that text from that paragraph C under early retirement incentive, that was from the document titled Teacher Early Retirement Incentive Proposal 2015-2016 dated October 13, 2014. However, I think we're supposed to vote on draft three that's been through the attorney, no?
No. That's, I was showing you what the draft three would look, what the language that would go into the handbook based on the document that to this point had gone through the board. So if we make an amendment to it, we will then have a draft four which will reflect what the board does this evening.
So clarification?
We're voting on the proposal.
Right.
Voting on the proposal.
Today we're voting on the proposal, not the draft three.
The draft three wasn't correct then?
No, the draft three, it is, he just added the 403B part and then the language that says if you can't put it in the 403B, it'll be a cash payout.
Okay.
I mean, that's only, everything else lines up.
Okay.
This seems like we're getting closer to a committee situation, for me anyway, because of the different paragraph Cs and, I mean, I have a question. I don't exactly know what a 403B is because that's not my wheelhouse of expertise. But is that going to affect them, whether we pay into a 403B and can we? As you said, or not? Is that going to affect them tax-wise or not? You know, how's that going to impact them? I don't know.
403B is like a 401K only for a nonprofit organization.
Can we do that?
But I don't think we can contribute into someone's 401K when they're not an employee. So I would question if we can do that for a 403B.
Okay, what would you like to do? Do we want to, the last discussion was voting on it with a change in item C. What do you want to do? Do you want to move it forward? Do you want to lay it over to committees or?
No, I don't understand.
Someone needs to make a motion or table it or something? Make a motion to accept it or table it?
Well, I think it speaks loudly, these go back to committee.
Okay, so make a motion.
Well.
Someone make a motion or table it?
Make a motion to table this.
Give her a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We will go back through committees and come back to us as soon as possible then.
Please.
You're welcome. We'll make sure we get it right. Thank you all. Thank you for coming. Okay, we'll move on to our next item then. Discuss and take action on the 2014-15 tax levy, another easy one.
Real motion?
Who's next?
Pizza?
Statutes require that the board has to revisit what happened at the annual meeting and finally adopt the tax levy by the first of November. Then we also have to, there's a form that the DPI provides to us online that we have to fill in that prorates the tax levy to the three municipalities based on the percentage of equalized value of the, of the district. I put together probably more stuff here than you wanted to read, but I wanted to illustrate one thing that on page two of the materials I provided, there are several lines there in gray. That's all information that has been received since the annual meeting. In fact, as of 10 o'clock this morning, the DPI was still providing districts with updated revenue limit worksheets for this year. Fortunately, ours didn't need to be changed, but I'm sure there are some people out there who are and it's really coming down to the last minute. Looking at a variety of different options, we believe that leaving the tax levy as it was adopted at the annual meeting, 16,390,469 dollars for the general fund, 14,749 dollars in the community service fund for a total of 16,405,218 is in keeping with the intent of the annual meeting. And in fact, with a very slight, it's 0.25% increase in our equalized value, the mill rate will actually go down about three cents from what was approved at the annual meeting. And the taxes on our $200,000 property, we drop about $6 and we will still be under levying by 76,000 and change from the maximum that's now allowed. So, and that is the administration's recommendation to leave the levy that was adopted at the annual meeting in place for next year or for this year.
All right, so the motion on the table would be to adopt the levy 2014-15 of 16,405,218? Is that correct?
Yes.
Who made the motion?
You made, did you make a motion?
No, I'm asking who. You said the motion is on the.
No, I said that's what he's, what the administration's recommending. So if someone would like to make that motion, they could. And then we can move and second it and discuss it, or we can wait and discuss it. Does anyone have any discussion on that? I just wanted to start us off on the right number.
One thing I should add, I'm sorry. The levy needs to be set by this weekend. The levy needs to be set by this weekend. The budget, you can change at any time during the year. And in fact, technically, we have to do the levy first and then the budget sometime later. And we can maybe at finance, talk about when's the appropriate time, for example. These are not audited figures. Do you wanna wait till we get the audit report to make any changes to the budget, things like that? So, um, you don't need to take any action on the budget tonight, was my point.
Just on the levy?
Just on the levy.
So if there's no discussion, I would entertain a motion then to approve the levy at sixteen million, four hundred and five thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. Would someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Give me a second.
Two hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Did I say two hundred and eighty-one?
He had transposed the numbers.
No, it's two, two hundred and eighteen.
That's why I said it twice. Okay, two hundred and eighteen. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Give us a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Next up, discuss and take action on District Smart Goal Number Two. David.
Hello. Hello. I'm back. I think it was two weeks ago at the board meeting, I had presented to you a list of the opportunities that you had requested, partnerships, volunteer opportunities, and internships. We took into account almost all the suggestions or requests that the board made two weeks ago, divided, um, divided those opportunities and partnerships into four separate lists and rewrote the SMART goal to reflect those changes. And I think we're, I think we're at where you wanted us to be at, and now we're just hoping that we can approve the goal.
Any discussion?
Everyone, I presented the, I presented all the lists, or included all the lists and the new goal in the board packet, so you've, you've had all the information.
So the goal we're approving is, "The Whittenell School District ensures that student learning and family and community engagement will be supported through the promotion of a positive district culture and effective communication as demonstrated by the following goals. June thirtieth, 2015, we will increase the number of community partnerships to enhance student educational experiences and expand citizenship opportunities by at least ten percent as compared to the existing partnerships during the 2013-14 school year." The next, uh, goal would be by June 2015, increase the number of both in-district opportunities and community-wide opportunities for student volunteers by at least ten percent as compared to the opportunities available during the 2013-14 school year. And by June fifteenth, we will increase the number of in-district internship opportunities for our students by at least ten percent as compared to the number of in-district opportunities available during the 2013-14 school year. Correct?
That is correct.
All right, any other discussion? If not, I wouldn't. A motion?
Discussion.
Yes.
Okay, so, so, okay, so it's percentage of partnership. So community partnerships, if it's ten percent, we'd add another three to four more partnerships.
That is correct.
Okay, that seems like it could be achievable. And then on the volunteer opportunities, if, is it, it's opportunities, not number stu, it's?
That is correct. The way I wrote it, uh, the way we wrote it rather is that, the problem with the, the, trying to increase the number of students is that some of these are very varied, or very varied at some, they're very varied. I mean, for example, there's, uh, I'm lost track, but I know there's the, um, the volunteering class where there's two hundred students. The problem with trying to increase the number of students is that we don't know how many students, some students might be doing six of these opportunities, and then we're, you know, we're, we're just replicating that student again and again and again if we try to get more students. So we're hoping to get more volunteer opportunities, and that was, I mean, it, it's just an easier number to track and it, mostly it's just easier to track.
I think for the first year, having more opportunities is a good start, you know? If you wanna expand upon that goal next year or something, we can maybe go more at students.
Okay.
This looks great. Thank you. You did a lot of work. I appreciate it.
Yes, we do.
Yep, no problem.
You know what happens if you don't hit that goal, though?
It's a SMART goal. They're meant to be attainable.
And that's why I looked at partnerships to see if that was like achievable, you know, like, you know, 'cause I saw that we had a lot of partnerships, and I'm like, ooh, ten percent is three to four more achievable?
No, we really appreciate it. I think it's a great start, and I look forward to expanding the opportunities for our students based on all your hard work. Okay, so then I would entertain a motion to approve this.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Proposed. Seeing none, we now have goal number two, so, cool. Now we have to bring back one through four, 'cause some of those we got missed. All right, we'll bring those up at the next meeting. Thank you all very much. Next, comments from school board regarding agenda items for future consideration. Does anyone have any future items? And Kathy, thank you for putting the whole list in there for us, so we know what's coming, and we'll keep working through all of your questions and the community's questions and concerns.
Yes. I don't know where else this would fit, but it, I think it would be, you know, we, we got that little email about that one little typo, the transposition of the number. It says, "We have this board packet as part of our, our record. Can we go back and just put it in like red with a little notation to the memo or something?" I just, I always just think, because otherwise we could be, someday we could be looking back at that wrong number and trying to figure out where our number came from.
Well, here's the thing, that's why you have minutes. Wouldn't that be noted in the minutes or of the next meeting?
It wasn't.
Well, the, the dollar amount of the motion would be.
Would be definitely, right.
But our history still has an error in it that was corrected in an email.
Our public document does. But do you start changing those public documents after they're out there?
You can publish an amendment.
You can put it in the minutes.
Put it in the minutes. I think that's the correct way to move that forward. Quinn, did you have a?
No.
Okay.
So the correct dollar amount in the minutes was two eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
Just, just note in the minutes that, that it was transposed in the public document.
Right.
Then there's your record.
Got it.
And then, for somebody like me, if I wanna go back to something after the number, go back to minutes.
Don't remember that stuff. You don't have to look it up, do you? I thought you had it all like right there.
That's what I have to remember.
Oh, okay. All right, any other future agenda items? Seeing none, how about board member announcements? I have one. I mean, just wanna say that the play was awesome. Our kids and our director of our musicals, they just, and plays are just awesome. Thank you. Has that word on. We thoroughly enjoyed that one. Very different, it's hard for me to follow some of that stuff, but the kids were awesome.
It was awesome. I actually went back and read the synopsis to make sure I was understanding it correctly, and I did. And I, I wanted to report that when I went home and told my son about the play, and I said, "I think this is what I was understanding," he goes, "Oh, yes, we did that play in English." And he could tell me the whole plot. So when you think they're not, might not be paying attention, they are. And then I also wanted to mention too, Decca is doing their food drive, um, like, the seventh, they go out and they bring the bags, and then the next weekend, they, they, out